...for the Planning Commission, January 8th. Stay up for a bunch of regions.
I have our divisions to fly in the United States of America. And to pilot our regions stands. My routine's us this term.
Oopsie. Appreciate your problems. I'm serious. Uh, we're all on?
Commissioner Cadwelder?
Here.
Commissioner Chambers?
Here.
Commissioner Plank?
Here.
Commissioner Schramman?
Here.
Chair Barker is absent.
Motion to approve Chair Barker's absence?
I make a motion that we approve Chair Barker's absence.
I'll support.
Okay. We're about to approval of the agenda. You have someone, you have to vote on your motion. Oh, that's right. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Proposed? It'd be fun to get your paperwork. Now we can go to number two?
Yes.
Okay. Approval of the agenda?
I make a motion we approve last month's agenda?
This month's agenda?
Or this one's agenda, sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll support.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, moving on. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, December 11th. Motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll support. Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Public comments, doesn't look like too much out there. Pretty much done. Old business, nothing. Public hearing, we gotta open it for a public hearing? For ordinance 18-01?
Yes.
Sorry, we have thoughtless here?
Yep. Um, so eight, uh, ordinance 18-01, if you guys recall, we worked on in November and December of, of, of last year. And so what this is, this updates chapter 22 of the zoning ordinance. Uh, there aren't a ton of, like, really, um, you know, major, well, there aren't really any major policy changes. A lot of it is just clarifying the language that's in the chapter. Um, adding things that should be in there, you know, kind of improving some sections, making it a little bit stronger where we felt it was necessary. So, I'll just kind of walk through one at a time, each of these, um, section where, where we made notable changes. Uh, first on the second page, which is section 2202, starting with subsection C. Uh, we added a section here on zoning compliance permits. This is something that we've been doing for a long time already. When somebody comes in for any kind of approval for, you know, fences or signs or anything like that, they have to get a zoning approval before they can do anything. So this kind of codifies that, uh, that process that we've been doing for quite some time. It basically just kind of walks through what the basic things are that need to be shown on, on, on a very simple site plan. Um, who writes the permits, if they have to pay any fees, so on and so forth. Um, pretty straightforward section. Um, again, this isn't, we're not starting anything new here. This is something that, that we've been doing for a while, but it's important to have a language in the ordinance that enables us to do it. And conversely, it, it, it also gives the, give, gives the city the authority to, um, you know, if they need to go after someone who has not followed this process, then we can take care of that either by having them go through the project or the process retroactively, or if there's an instance where someone just refuses to get, to get these kind of permits, then the city can take appropriate actions to, uh, to rectify the situation. Uh, moving ahead, section 2203, no changes. 2204, um, no changes there. That we add some changes, starting on page six, under 22.05, under zoning amendments. Um, this section deals with people, and anytime someone wants to make a change to the zoning ordinance or the zoning map, so if they want to rezone the property, um, or we've had instances in the past where someone has wanted to change the text of the ordinance somewhere. That's something that happens occasionally. Uh, they have to follow a, a specific process. So again, some of this was already in here, the first part, where it kind of generally walks through the process and says who can initiate it, um, what the application has to consist of, but after that, there wasn't really any process or any criteria for how we make these decisions as a planning commission. So under, under subsection four, it requires that the planning commission hold a public hearing, which is something that's required for all zoning text amendments or map amendments, like the one we're holding right now, for example. Um, number five states that after the hearing, the planning commission must forward its, the application along with the recommendation to council for a final decision. So any change to the ordinance itself is something that the, the city council has to do. Planning commission in this instance is a recommending body. You don't actually make the final decision on changing property, changing zoning classifications of property, anything like that. Number six is review criteria. So when someone wants to make a zoning amendment, the planning commission has these criteria here. There's only three of them, um, but there are some criteria here to help guide your decision-making process. So we can, so it helps you guys to apply the same standards to everybody so you can come to a conclusion that's consistent with the master plan. We were looking at surrounding properties and really being careful to analyze the impact of whatever the zoning change might be. And then the last item, number seven, uh, states that the city's decision on, on a zoning amendment cannot be appealed to the zoning board of appeals. Um, and that's something where if somebody wants to, uh, appeal a, a zoning amendment, uh, the process I believe would be to, they have to, there's an opportunity for them to file a petition, to send it to a referendum. Is where, is where the next step of that goes. Um, but that, that, that's not something where we want this, to, to the board of zoning appeals to become kind of a super planning commission to whatever it wants. But in, in, in your case, it's not much of an issue because council, it's also the, the same board. So, you know, council would, I wouldn't think council would overturn their own decision that they just may not rezone. But it's, I think it's important to have it in here anyways, um, so it's clear where the process ends here in the city and, and where it goes from there. Questions so far?
Yeah, I got a question, Andy.
Yeah.
A, B, C, D, uh, on my tablet here. It's, it's written in a different color than everything else. Did, did we?
Up at the top?
Yeah, did we change something with that?
Nope. So if it's not highlighted here, that's something that's already in the ordinance.
Okay.
So if it's already there, I didn't highlight it because we're not changing any of it.
Okay, because everything else is black and then this is like a green and then I go to yellow. So I just wanted to make sure that... Do you want to see what I'm talking about?
No, not at all.
Just look at the paperwork.
Right, see, yeah, right. See, we're black here and then we're green and we're yellow. So I wasn't sure if...
Mine's like me, too.
Hmm?
Mine's like me, too.
Is it?
Okay.
Mine's like me.
Yeah, that, that could have been something where Microsoft Word was just doing whatever it does and it changes colors and stuff. But yeah, so A, B, C, and D, all that stuff is already in the ordinance.
Okay.
So we're not making any changes there. Only four, five, six, and seven below it are, are all new stuff.
Okay.
Um, 22.06, these are requirements for holding a public hearing and how we notice a public hearing. Um, the notice requirements are, are pretty well spelled out in the zoning enabling act, but I think it's helpful to have them listed here. So, um, we wrote this so it's consistent with the act, obviously. Um, so anytime there's a public hearing required in the zoning ordinance, there's a, there, there's kind of a specific process that we go through locally. So, uh, the, for something like a text amendment, like for what we're doing right now, uh, the, the notice of this amendment in this hearing tonight had to appear in the paper 15 days ago. Um, and when there's something like rezoning or a special land use that applies to a specific parcel, we, we also have to notice 15 days before the meeting. We have to send a letter to everyone that lives within 300 feet of that property. So the neighbors are being notified of this potential change. Um, that's all spelled out here. So on the bottom of page six and spilling over to page seven here, um, you'll see that, uh, and except for in certain instances, which we'll get into in a minute, um, and in, and in addition to the paper, we also have to notify the applicant, the owners of the property, everybody within 300 feet of the property, whether or not they live in the city. So if it's something that's right on the border, we'd have to notify people in Lowell Township or Bergen Township, depending on, on where it was. Item D talks about what the notice has to contain as far as information. So we have to describe the nature of the amendment, uh, where, if it pertains to a property, where that property is, usually by address. We also usually include the parcel number, too. Um, and then we also have to say where and when the application will be considered and how they can provide written comments. So every time that, that we do a, a public notice for a special land use, rezoning, zoning board of appeals, it all has this information at, at a minimum, um, and then we send it out to everyone within 300 feet. And it's published in the paper. The only time that we don't have to send it to everybody within 300 feet is if we're talking about rezoning, like 15, 20 parcels at once. And there's a huge number of properties that can, that are contiguous and, and they're being rezoned from one district to another. If there's more than 11, there's 11 or more that we do not have to send out the 300-foot letters, but we still have to publish it in the paper. So this isn't something that you guys have to do, but it's important to be aware of, just to kind of know how the process works behind the scenes a little bit. Um, and then lastly, uh, we haven't done this here, so far as I'm aware. Um, but during a, a, a public hearing, if that lasts for a very long time, planning commission can adjourn the public hearing to another time as long as you state where and when. And then I think in those instances, you don't have to renotice it, although possibly we might do it anyways. Are there any questions on that section about noticing hearings? Okay. Um, last section here is on fees and applicant escrow accounts. Again, this is something the city's been doing for a long time. Um, and so what this enables the city to do is, um, this language allows the city to establish application fees and applicant escrows. So whenever someone comes in for a site plan review or a special land use, rezoning request, variance, almost anything, um, they have to pay an, an, an application fee and then they also have to put additional funds into an escrow account. The application fee covers the non-refundable costs. So for a special land use, for example, there's processing, the, you know, there are processing fees that, that go into that, their cost that, that the city incurs as a result of that application. So if it's a prepared notice, it has to be published in the paper, that costs money, you pay the planning commissioner, that costs money. So all of those kind of non-refundable things are lumped in with the application fee. In addition to that, there are applicant escrow accounts and the, and the money in the escrow account is used to pay, uh, third-party folks like me or like the township attorney or the township, or the township, the city attorney or the city engineer. Um, and those are, wha, are, whatever isn't used, then gets refunded back to the applicant. So if there's a, an application fee of, say, $500 and an escrow of, say, $1,000, they'll write a check to the city for 1,500. Um, 500 of it is non, is non-refundable. And then that thousand gets put in an escrow account. And if, say, 700 of it gets spent just during the review process, at, at the end of that process, if there's any money left over, that gets returned back to the applicant. In the case of a very complicated review where that thousand isn't enough, once that thousand is used, then the city calls the applicant and says, hey, you need to replenish.
Give us more money.
Give us more money. Um, and so that's a way for the city to kind of protect itself. And, um, when there are these applications that require the city to spend a lot of money on people like me and attorneys and engineers and stuff, um, it, it helps kind of, it, it, it doesn't come out of the city's general fund. It's what helps for your budget and things like that. And those are fees that would not otherwise be incurred if not for the application. Um, that is the end of this, of that chapter. Um, again, most of these changes are not particularly, you know, they're not big policy changes, they're not departures from what we've already been doing. Um, but it just, you know, puts them in the ordinance, sort of codifies them.
Tax assistance.
Yep, exactly. It, it just kind of strengthens all that, all that stuff up. So, um, if you guys have any questions or want to see any edits to this, please let me know. Um, if you're comfortable with it, then you would, uh, have, you would approve a motion to recommend approval of this ordinance to city council.
Um, do we close the public hearing first?
Yes, you would close the public hearing.
So we're going to close the public hearing on ordinance 18-01? Now a motion to approve this for the, uh, commission?
I make a motion that we approve the ordinance 18-01. Send it off to council.
I'm good with that.
I'll support.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now we open up a public hearing for 18-02? Public's out there.
Yeah. Um, section 18-02, so, uh, or ordinance 18-02, this is the one we started on back in, what, maybe October? Um, so this amended several sections of the zoning ordinance, as you can see, to address, uh, what we call short-term rentals. This is really one of the, one of the kind of hot button topics in planning right now. There's a lot of discussion happening around short-term rentals. And by short-term rentals, I'm thinking about Airbnb, VRBO type of things that really kind of pushed this issue to the forefront. And what some communities aren't experiencing is that, um, there are places that are basically single-family residential neighborhoods. They're kind of becoming these very short-term transient neighborhoods for lack of a better word, where people are coming in on weekends or for a few days at a time. And just there's constant turnover in neighborhoods where they were once single-family residential neighborhoods. So the people were, were, were living there all the time. So there are some, some, uh, sort of neighborhood stability concerns that go along with that. Um, as it relates to Lowell specifically, uh, the city has not had a huge problem with these. Uh, there is one person who was doing a short-term rental, uh, in the city. We were aware of him for a while and, uh, we basically told him that, look, if, if, if we hear a complaint about you, we're gonna have to, you know, you're gonna have to stop, we'll have to deal with it. It went on for not that long, really, a few months, and then we did get a complaint or a question to someone saying, look, where are all these cars coming from? What's going on? Um, and so at that time, the city decided that let's, let's push pause and have him stop and let's address the issue. Um, either, uh, either through zoning or through some other kind of ordinance. City council ultimately decided that a zoning amendment would, would be the best way to regulate this. And so that's what you have here in, in, in front of you. So again, what we'll do is just kind of walk through here section by section. Um, these are pretty straightforward, really. Section one and two are just additions to the definitions. So in chapter two of, of the zoning ordinance, we just had definitions for all kinds of stuff. Uh, bed and breakfast establishment is something that is already defined in the zoning ordinance. Um, and so the only change here is where we add the phrase, but this definition does not include short-term rentals as defined by the ordinance. That's something that's, that's, that's different. Um, and then a brand-new definition is in section two where we define short-term rentals specifically. Um, and so here, and we've talked about this at, at the planning commission meeting the last few months. Um, short-term rental is defined as the renting or subletting of any dwelling for a term of 30 days or less, but not including campgrounds, hotels, bed and breakfast establishments, transitional housing operated by nonprofit group homes, adult foster care, so on and so forth. Section three of four, fi, and five, um, each permit short-term rentals within the, uh, SR suburban residential, R1 residential, and C2 central business district, only with special land use approval. So where it says K short-term rental, and then under section four, it says H short-term rental. Under section five here, it says H short-term rental. That new subsection H is the list of all the special land uses in each of those zoning districts. So just by adding that in there means that they have to go through the special land use process if they want to have a short-term rental. And for the other zoning districts, they're just not allowed. Section six, starting on halfway down page two, uh, where it says amendment to section 17, oh, four, chapter 17. This is the real veto of the regulations. So when we look at an application for a short, for a short-term rental, when we get one, we have general standards for special land uses that apply to all, to all of them. And then we also have a bunch of very specific special land use standards that apply only to certain activities. So in, in, in this case, we'll add a, a new subsection to this chapter, subsection EE, short-term rental. And then there are the 14 or so, uh, standards that are on the bottom of page two and continuing down through most of page three. Um, so the first thing is that, that we did here is we added some exemptions. So not everyone is going to fall into this. So, um, we wrote here, any member of a family, as well as that family members, guests, they occupy a dwelling, so on, as they own, own the dwelling. Okay, so we're not gonna get into regulating how long your mom can stay at your house, for example. As much as you might want us to do that, we're not going to. Um, subsection two here, just clarify that it's only permitted with special land use in SR, R1, and C2 districts. C3 requires that a short-term rental have a minimum stay of three days and a maximum stay of 30 days. Um, you ask what happens if someone exceeds 30 days? If someone rents a house for a day, 35 days, we're just gonna consider it a regular permanent rental of a property. Uh, number four requires that, um, the rental on the property is located on meets the dimensional requirements for that zoning district. So it has to be on a lot of the, of the size that meets that, that district. It has to be, the building has got to meet the setbacks and have the minimum floor area that's required for that district. Um, and number five gets into occupancy. So we say the maximum occupancy for a short-term rental is two guests per bedroom, uh, but in no case shall occupancy exceed 15 guests per dwelling. And we're going to say that the planning commission may permit additional to two persons, per, two people per finished floor if the following standards are met. And then we have standards related to privacy, uh, the size of the lot. In this case, it would have to be on two or more acres. And they have to provide sufficient off-street parking for those, for those additional guests beyond 15. Uh, I don't anticipate in, in the near future this being a major issue with one person between them. Certainly didn't have 15 people staying there. Um, but as people sometimes use these for, you know, vacation, family reunion kind of things, where you go to, um, a place like this and rent a house for a weekend, they can get pretty crowded at times. Number six deals with parking. So it requires one off-street parking space for each bedroom. Um, except for in, in the C2 district, which is downtown, all parking must be off-street and be on the lot where the rental is located. Number seven requires that the host, uh, notify the fire and police departments as far as the, the dates of the guests and how many people are gonna be there. Number eight requires that the host provide the city with, with a 24-hour telephone number, which the host or their agent can be reached in case of emergency or enforcement issues. Number nine requires them to provide an in-unit notice in a conspicuous place that includes the address, the 24-hour telephone number with the host's or host agent's name and all of the rules that relate to short-term rentals. We want the host to tell the guest, here's who you called. If there's an issue, here are the rules. Please follow them, kind of a thing. Um, number 10 requires that the rental be conducted in a manner that is consistent with the customary use of a single-family dwelling. Um, so again, we, we want as, as, as much as possible for these things to retain that kind of single-family character that a normal house does when there are people living in it. Um, and it goes on to say that it shall provide safe, reasonable, adequate sleeping arrangements in traditional bedrooms and with proper degress. Uh, and then we go on to say that use of camper's tents or similar arrangements to provide additional occupancy on premises is prohibited. So 15 means 15 inside the house. It doesn't mean 15 inside the house and then, you know, all the kids are sleeping outside in tents or something. Uh, number 11 is just simply states that occupants are not to approach onto neighboring properties. Um, 12 requires that the host provides sufficient ways to be set to be substantially screened from view and the premises must be maintained free of debris and unwholesome substances. Garbage must be kept in a closed container and disposed of on your weekly, on your regular weekly schedule. So at 15 people, one waste container might not be enough. It might be two. We expect the host to take care of that. Thirteen, the appearance of it shall not conflict with the residential character of the neighborhood. Uh, the dwelling shall be maintained for all applicable local and state codes and kept in good repair so that the use and nobody attracts from the general appearance of the neighborhood. Again, as you can see, a lot of these are just sort of encouraging or requiring a short-term rental to sort of fit in, just like everything else does. And that's really what we're, what, what we're after here. And the last one, number 14, states that the host or their agent must be available to accept telephone calls at all times during, during which the short-term rental is being rented. Uh, the host or agent must have a key to the unit and be capable of being physically present at the unit within 60 minutes to, to address issues unless arrangements are made for a substitute person to address issues. So again, the host is in Florida or Phoenix or something. They need to, they need to designate somebody locally. It, it could just be a neighbor. I mean, it doesn't have to be a, a property manager, but they have to designate somebody to just kind of keep an eye on things and make sure that it's being conducted. And if there's an issue, whether it's an emergency or enforcement issue, we expect them to have somebody locally who can help to address the problems if there are any. Um, the rest of the sections, seven, eight, seven and eight are just the regular publication and effective date stuff that we've put on all the ordinances. So really, uh, the, this last item, number 14, is the end of the stuff that pertains specifically to short-term rentals. And are there any questions from the commission on that?
Yeah, I had a question on why the number three here. Um, so short-term rental requires a minimum stay of three days. Why is there a minimum? Seems like a single night would be, I'm just wondering how.
Yeah, I, I, I think the idea is to have, um, to have a little bit of stability so you don't have a new family and a new person in every single night.
Yeah.
So this would require, this kind of assumes that this is like the weekend kind of a thing. So Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you'd have someone there. And then, um, after that, probably the next weekend, you would have somebody else there. Um, there are some ordinances that, that require a much longer minimum stay, like a week, I've noticed in, in our research. So this is, three is the shortest that I've seen. There aren't, aren't many or hardly any that I've seen that allow for like a single overnight.
Yeah, I guess I just took this as a definition unless, uh, or like regulations or any standard or something. So, so someone couldn't, someone was turning over a place with just nightly stays and they, they couldn't slip under here and say, well, no. I'm not a short-term rental. I'm just, it's a one-night stay, so I don't need that definition.
Right, yeah, and, and that's true. Um, but we, we included the, the, the number in the definition because I think without it, it becomes too confusing as far as what we're talking about. Um, so how, how, we have to define short somehow, and so this gives us a window to do so.
Yeah, no, I, I like the idea of having to say it at least three days.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm good.
If not, same as with ordinance 18.01, it would be a recommendation to city council to approve the ordinance.
Close the hearing first. Close the hearing on ordinance 18-02 and, uh, move for a motion, a recommendation for the council.
I make a motion that we, uh, send 18-02 off to city council.
Okay.
For approval.
Uh, support.
Okay.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so that gets carried on to the council. We're done with that one.
All right.
Zoning amendments.
So also included in the order, um, packets were three separate, um, memos from us. And I'm not think gonna go into these in painstaking detail right now, but I'm just wanna sort of introduce these to you to, um, get to look at them. So I'm gonna start with the one, uh, subject line is residential zoning districts review. Uh, at the previous meeting, as we kind of moved forward looking at all of these, um, zoning amendments, we're just kind of going through the whole ordinance, chapter by chapter, basically looking at, at all of this stuff. So what we did here is we looked at all of the residential zoning districts, and there are a, a, a few of them. So that's chapters five, six, uh, seven, and eight, and nine. Um, there are a few changes that, that we will be making, what we started out doing here, just a few areas. So for example, starting on page one, suburban residential. So we did here, and I'll just kind of walk you through a few of the changes. Section 5.01, the first sentence. Section five point oh one, the first sentence, I deleted the line that specifically mentions the low-density family future land use designation of the master plan. I did that because I'm, sometimes when we look at how property is zoned, in some instances, it's not exactly what is in the master plan. So we've changed zoning from, oh, like commercial to residential for areas that are designated mixed use in certain areas of the city, or maybe sometimes it just makes sense to rezone a property to residential from something else because it fits with what's right next to it. And so in changing this, I did so because I don't want the planning commission to be totally tied down to what you have to do when you rezone property. There might be instances where a property that's not within the low-density, single-family, future land use category still should be zoned SR. And so we just took out the part that refers specifically to the master plan here and just said that it's intended for residential uses unlocked that are generally larger than those found and were developed areas of the city. That doesn't mean that the master plan doesn't apply, because it most certainly still does. And it's something that we look at every time there's a zoning change. But that highly specific language that, you know, it feels to me like it tries to limit it to only those properties that are designated that way on the master plan. And with the way that the future land use map is and just the reality of land use, it's not always going to be that perfectly neat and clean. And so this allows for that little bit of flexibility. On page two, we just added some language here that kind of clarified things. So we added the word setback, where it says minimum front yard thirty feet, minimum side yard setback. We're deleting this thirty-foot setback for non-residential buildings because it's the same as it is for the other ones. Same thing with rear, before it just said rear yard, it didn't say if that was a minimum or a maximum, what we were talking about. So again, we added, we're doing the minimum setback to be thirty-five feet. Maximum building height is thirty-five feet. Maximum lot coverage is thirty-five percent. A lot of this is just, it's actually adding the standard in here so we all know what we're talking about. If it just said, a lot coverage should be thirty-five percent, does that mean that it has to be exactly thirty-five percent? Or at least thirty-five, you know, I don't know. I know what it should say based on every other ordinance I've ever seen, but I want to make sure that it's carried through here and it's clear to the reader what this is saying. So we just made some of those changes here just to sort of clarify and make it easier to understand. Section six point oh one, it's kind of the same story here. That specific master plan language we took out. And then in the table below, in section six point oh four, again, you'll see where we added the word setback, minimum, minimum, maximum, and so forth. All the other numbers, a lot areas, a lot width, we haven't changed. Right now, I don't, we did some research on the lot coverage and things like that. We haven't felt a need to change that stuff too much, so we've opted to leave it for now and we'll continue looking at it moving forward. On the third page, you'll see in section seven point oh one, we made that same change as far as the master plan goes. Then we added a little bit more language in this description that says that it's primarily intended for residential uses and related non-residential uses, and then also added in traditional neighborhoods with smaller lots. Because again, just looking at the map, that's what we're talking about. I mean, our two district is kind of all the neighborhoods surrounding us here on both sides of the river. Most of our zone are two, just the range in normal, traditional blocks. Lots are more or less the same size as all the planned lots from years ago. So we thought that was important to add, that we're looking at this traditional neighborhood pattern. We did make a few changes here in the district regulations. So the minimum front yard setback, we're suggesting to knock that down to twenty feet from thirty feet. And that was, that's something that we're suggesting, just kind of looking at how it's developed. I think historically, if you go way back, a lot of houses were built somewhere around twenty feet. And by making it thirty altogether, we have a whole bunch of houses that are now not conforming. There have been some instances in the past where Sue and I have looked at, you know, places where people want to build an addition or they want to, you know, do some kind of work on their house. And they need to be closer to the road, or their building already is closer to the road because that's just how it's historically developed. And so we felt like changing the setback to twenty feet kind of fits more of what's existing on the ground right now. The other changes here, again, we added all of the minimums and maximums and the word setback in here. The maximum lot coverage, we bumped that up to thirty-five percent instead of thirty percent. I'm not sure why it was thirty. Again, there were some instances where we felt like thirty was probably a little bit limiting. I'm a little concerned that even thirty-five might be a little bit limiting because you have a decent-sized house on one of these smaller arch lots are going to, you could fill up a third of that lot with a building pretty quickly. But, you know, I feel like, at least as an initial draft, a thirty-five percent would make, you know, make a pretty detailed look at this too and make sure that that makes sense for everywhere. We also don't want to make it too high, either because we don't want to have, you know, we don't want to drastically increase stormwater runoff and things like that either. On page four, chapter eight, R3, again, you'll see in eight oh one, made a few changes here, intended for medium to high-density residential uses. In the last sentence, the purpose of this district is to provide additional housing opportunities by providing a variety of options, including single-family, two-family and multiple-family dwellings. Again, we allow multifamily in R3 right now. Schneider Manor, for example, is on R3, so those are all multiple-family dwellings. And so I think it's important that we add that in the intent statements since that's what we're permitting already. Setbacks, again, we're suggesting that be bumped down to twenty feet from thirty feet. Thirty-five percent lot coverage, again, adding all of the minimum, maximum setback words in here so it's clear to read. And then the last one, MHP, the only change that we're making here is this first sentence here, which again is that, is that master plan-related sentence. There's the only one manufactured housing community in town, so this one's pretty easy. That's really, it only pertains to the one property. And the city regulates most of the manufactured home part and is pretty well fully developed. So in the near future, I don't, I don't see us dealing with it much, but it is important that it's included in the ordinance. We do have to include manufactured housing by right somewhere in the city. And so this obviously carries it forward in this current location. This is by no means a final draft or a finished document, it's something just to kind of get you guys looking at it and thinking about these things. So if you have any specific changes or suggestions or discussion on this, I can make changes. Otherwise, what I'll do for the next month is probably put this into a full format that includes all the land uses. And next month, we can maybe take a look at all of the land uses for each of these districts and see if there's anything that we need to add as a primitive use or a special use or maybe move some stuff around depending on what makes sense to you.
You guys have anything more?
No, I didn't see anything in there, Andy. I missed a run, but I mean, put it together.
Okay.
Well, good with that one. And on to the next one.
Okay, there's two more of these. I'm going to, I'm not going to get into a lot of detail on signs yet because that one's going to need some pretty picky work. But again, a lot of this is just sort of introductory for you guys. I do want to talk a little bit about parking. So this is the same thing here. We went through the entire parking chapter and we're just looking to make some suggestions here on how to make the ordinance work a little bit better for the city. We don't have a lot of problems with it as a general note.
Well, I've got one problem.
But...
No.
I think there are some areas where we can add some flexibility here. So under nineteen oh one, no changes. Nineteen point oh two, location of parking on the very bottom here of the first page. C2 mixed-use districts on or off-street park, public parking within four hundred feet of these may be counted toward the minimum parking requirement. That's been in here for a while with a little bit different language. But whenever a use, like with Big Boiler or any other uses downtown, when they've come in, obviously in the C2 district, in a traditional downtown, you can't make everyone fit all the parking outside because it just makes no sense, obviously. There's no room. So in those instances, because there is a fair amount of public parking downtown, both on the street and in the public lots, whether it's the new one or the older ones here behind City Hall and by the library, if they're within four hundred feet of that use, that counts towards their parking minimum. So it's possible, depending on where you're located, that you could put something in downtown and not have to provide any additional parking because there's so much public parking around. And that's kind of the idea. Section nineteen point oh four, so on page two here. Some of the stuff is just, we're just adding titles to all of these subsections, so it just, I think it's a little bit easier to read. Item D here says that parking shall be provided to maintain a proper ratio to any increase in floor area or building use capacity or change of use. So one of the things that we look at oftentimes when occupancy changes hands or the use changes hands. So if there's, a good example would be where Little Claro Cracker is, it used to be a bank. Then now it's a Crater Factory's office. Those have different parking requirements because there's different parking demand for those things. So when they apply for any kind of a zoning permit, we take a look and ensure that they, there is enough parking at the site to accommodate what the new use is going to be. Moving on here, under subsection K, under shared parking, we're modifying what's in here now, where it says, joint or collective provision of off-street parking for mixed uses in the same building or buildings may be less than the sum of the requirements for each use computed separately. So what we see a lot is if there's any kind of mixed-use building or you have, it could be a strip mall where there's a bunch of different uses in it, it could be a mixed-use building like downtown where you have residential offices and retail on the first floor. When there is overlap and what those uses are, we allow for less parking than what you would compute separately for each of those things. So a good example of this would be like an office over maybe a restaurant, right? The office is generally going to need its parking from eight to five. The restaurant's going to need most of its parking on nights and weekends. And so there's a lot of overlap there. So instead of having a ton of parking that's sitting empty fifty percent of the time, we're going to allow them to combine their efforts, share the parking and not require so much of it. So we're just going to have less parking, but it'll be more efficiently used. And that way we'll have less land occupied for parking and more land available for building stuff. Subsections M and N. M is something that we've put in here just because there are a lot of trails in and around the city, the North Country Trail, Larry Trail and others. This allows for buildings and uses with twenty or more off-street spaces. We're allowing them to replace five off-street parking spaces with bicycle parking or bike racks equal to that number of spaces. This isn't something that they have to do, but if there's a potential that that place could have some bike traffic, then maybe that would replace some of the traffic that would otherwise be occupied by cars. They can have a bike rack somewhere on the property. And then subsection N here allows the planning commission a fairly free rein, more or less, to adjust these standards. And we do that because it's difficult for us as planners to always know exactly how much parking they're going to need. The ordinance has specific numbers of spaces required for all of the uses. So when we do site plans, as you guys know, we'll see that this use demand, according to the ordinance, one space is needed for every four hundred square feet of floor area for this particular use. In some instances, what the ordinance requirement is going to be might be way too much or not enough depending on what the use is. Typically, businesses don't want to provide more parking than they need to because it's expensive, obviously. But in some instances too, like we saw with Curtis Cleaners, they needed way more parking than our ordinance required. So the ordinance required like thirty spots and he said, hey, look, I need like sixty spots here or something like that. So he just, he had to build more because he needed more. And so what this section does is allows the planning commission to modify the minimum standards in here if the applicant presents a convincing case that it's necessary. So we just don't want someone just to pay their thing because they just don't feel like putting in landscaping. But if they can make, if they can make a convincing argument to the planning commission that, look, we need this parking for X, Y and Z, then they can choose to adjust the minimum parking standards as they feel is appropriate. Other questions so far?
How do we change if our parking is on Main Street?
What do you mean?
So you got people parking out here in front of the barbecue that there's no parking there all the time.
That's a, I mean, that's a police issue primarily if people are parking.
There's no signs there.
The council, well, that's an MDOT road, so it's a little different. But that would be something that the city, either through council and probably through MDOT, would have to look at adding some no parking signs or something.
Just checking.
That's something I think we could add, like burns sticker.
That's passing all the time, there's parking there.
Well, they park in part one too. Like a same parking.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not something we can really deal with too much in zoning because it's not, it's not private property and it's MDOT property, so we can't also just go stick the signs up on a property wherever we want, so. But yeah, Mike would be the one probably to check into that for you. We have not made any changes to nineteen point oh five or oh six. Nineteen point oh seven, we took a fairly quick look here. We only made a couple of changes in the table, that's on page five of our report here. So looking at the manual, we have a manual for parking generation that kind of tells us, you know, roughly how much parking is needed for a whole variety of uses. Restaurants, drive-in restaurants or similar uses for the sale of food, beverages and refreshments. We felt that your, one space for each seventy-five square feet was a bit high, so we bumped that up to a hundred. So that would require fewer spaces for that kind of establishment. For banks, same thing, we thought two hundred, one per two hundred square feet was too much, so we bumped that up to two fifty, so that again, that's kind of require fewer spaces for banks. The other ones that kind of first blushed through the book looked like they were about where they needed to be. And again, this ordinance is going to give you guys some flexibility when an actual application comes in to make an informed, intelligent decision. And the last section, nineteen oh eight, that deals with loading spaces, we do not propose any changes there. Questions?
I'm good with it. What do you guys sign? Any concerns or comments?
The only thing I saw with the lettering is with adding one, like because her page five, Jay was crossed out.
Yeah, that's a, yeah.
But that's just a, nothing.
Yeah, that'll get cleaned up once we get all the changes adjusted and software.
Andy, the warehouse and storage buildings, it's two thousand square feet, minimum of four. Is that, is that pretty standard and typical?